All right. Call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Beeter.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Drelka.
Here.
White.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here. Please join us in a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a motion on the agenda as received or amended.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. All opposed. The agenda is approved. Next, the comments. Anybody wishing to speak to the board at this time on an item that is not an agenda item? Is there anybody in the room?
No one in the room.
All right. Anybody online? Right. Moving on to claims and payments.
Good morning, everybody. James Perry, Finance Director. Claims come out to $345,545.70. A large portion of that is coming from the Sheriff's Department, $185,896.64. And again, a large chunk of that is $107,450 for medical services for NAF Care. Looking through it, everything looks good. There are a few other points I'd like to mention here. $54,482.83 came from secondary roads. And $28,97 came from jail commissary. But again, everything looks normal and good, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have motion and second. Any discussion or questions? If you're done, roll call, please, Mr. Beeter.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Drelka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes. Moving on to receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board.
Morning, Kathy.
Good morning.
Morning.
Kathy Aniplos, County Engineer. Just a brief update on the secondary roads employees. They are hauling mile rock today and spreading that. And most of the other people are indoors greasing and cleaning vehicles just due to the rain. We are trying to get the roads prepared to have the dust control vendors come and apply the treatments in about two weeks. The office staff, we are continuing to work on inspection of Cedar Wopsi River Bridge and King Road Bridge down south of the port. Our GIS technician is continuing to help the Health Department track the COVID-19 cases. And then the last we have heard is that our asphalt paving projects will not begin until July 9th, July of this summer, in July is what ASPRO is telling us. Can I answer any questions?
Kathy, I have a couple.
Sure.
Is it feasible to kind of, I don't know how much rock you're putting down, but obviously the roads are in a lot better shape than they were a year ago, especially with all the gravel you put down last fall, of kind of backing off a little bit and saving some of that budget for rock?
So last year, we placed, I might have to go back and check our numbers, but I want to say we placed 15 to 18 miles of mile rock in each district. We try to replace a third of each district's rock every year, and that's typically about 20 miles, considering an average of 60 miles per district. We are, so what we got finished last year was a normal year, or slightly below a normal year. We are moving in the direction of hopefully placing the 18 to 20 miles of mile rock this year, what we consider a normal year. So we haven't been placing in whole a lot of extra this, so far this year. We had to place very little spot rock just due to the conditions of the roads being better, certainly much better than last year.
Is there a certain area, I mean, I've been, obviously with a lot of time on our hands, I've been on a lot of our gravel roads, and they're really in pretty good shape. Is there one area that you targeted that's worse than the others?
No. Each district is, the greater district determines where they place the mile rock for that coming year, so we're just out placing that. And it can be.
Yeah. I guess where I'm going with this again, and we've talked about it before, is obviously you use quite a bit of gas tax money for rock, and obviously that's going to be greatly reduced, not only in this fiscal year, probably in the upcoming fiscal year, so I just want you to keep that in mind, that we're going to be getting less.
Yes, I fully understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy, I just had a question, and it was regarding, you talked about the asphalt paving, I think going to be in September?
Most likely in July is what ASPRO is telling us right now, based on their schedules with other projects in the area.
Okay. Just kind of a backup of projects that would have put us in that timeline, or?
So our main paving is being done by ASPRO this year, and they have other places they need to be. They're going to be doing some work on Highway 20, and they've told us that they'll do that work first and then come to us. Right now, they think about July.
Thank you.
And then we do have our Turkey Foot Heights project that is not being done by ASPRO. It's being done by Heartland Asphalt. We put on that project a late start date of, I want to say, September. And so they've already told us that it'll be the end of the season, is what they're thinking right now, probably September, before they come and do that work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other department heads or elected officials wish to give an update today?
Chris, I have one question for James.
Okay.
James, we're going to be bonding here pretty soon. Is that correct?
Uh, shouldn't be. For what?
I thought we budgeted for the new fiscal year on bonding for the bridge, was it, or the other road? I thought we were going to do bonds this year.
Oh, for the four, oh, sorry, for the $4 million in FY '21?
Yeah.
So that'll come in the fall. Ideally, talking with Maggie, depending on what the interest rates are kind of looking at, you're probably October.
Is this, have you had any discussion with her in regards to this economy and everything? Were, the interest rates were pretty favorable when we set our budget, but have they gone the other way, or?
I haven't had those conversations with Maggie as far as municipal interest rates, so.
Why don't you give us an idea on what they're thinking? Obviously, the economy is going to take a while to bounce back. I don't know if that has any effect on bonding or not.
Right. And I can go through it too and get a report to the Board, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Beeter.
Good morning, Board. Grant Beeter, Blackhawk County Auditor. I wanted to give you an update on absentee voting for the elections that we have going right now. With the primary election, as you may recall, the Secretary of State's Office sent out absentee ballot requests to all active registered voters in the state. And so that was in the middle of last week, and we've been getting a lot of ballot requests mailed in to the Election Office since then. So through yesterday afternoon, we had 8,270 ballots requested, and about 396 have been returned already. This is comparing to the 2018 primary election, where we had just around 8,000 total voters. And so we already have over 8,000 absentee ballots requested. We had about 1,200 absentees in that election. So, and 8,000 is a pretty good number historically overall for voting in the primary. Looking back several elections, I saw one year where we had about 12,000. I didn't see anything else near to that. So it's very plain that people are taking advantage of this way of voting, and so we are hopeful that that means most people that are going to vote are going to do it by mail, and not that many people will be doing it on Election Day, June 2nd. And as you may know, we have decided to reduce our number of polling places on Election Day from the normal 62 precincts down to combining precincts to have seven polling places around the county. So we obviously expect a much lower turnout of in-person voting on Election Day, and the numbers seem to be bearing us out. I also wanted to note that the July 7th election in Cedar Falls, it was originally scheduled for March 24th for the council person vacancy there. We've had 6,667 requests through yesterday, 4,732 returned, so there's about 30% of the ballots still out on that. So hopefully, those will be coming in, but voting has tapered off on that one. And that's also that over 6,000 voting in a special election for council vacancy is a pretty fair turnout, historically speaking. So, any questions?
Yeah, Grant, when you indicate 8,000 so far, and we've had that before, what was the polling numbers when you had the 8,000 absentees?
Well, last year, or two years ago, 2018, we had right around 8,000 people vote total. About 1,200 of those were absentee, so about 6,800 people voted at the polls.
Do you think that the word's getting out there enough for the absentees? I know I've heard people get their requests from the state, but is there anything else we can do to inform the public that take advantage of this absentee voting?
We continue to do press releases and social media information on that. There are a number of campaigns that are stressing it, and it does seem that the word's getting out there. When you look at this year's ballot compared to past years, normally when you have a stronger turnout in a primary, it seems to relate to having gubernatorial contests in one party or the other. The presidential year contest like we have this year, since, you know, the president isn't on the primary ballot in Iowa, and so you have legislative offices, you have county offices, that usually doesn't show much of a turnout compared to the governor years. So, you know, I think we're right in the ballpark of what we would normally expect for a total turnout. I think there's a good chance that we're going to exceed a normal turnout just because of the fact that people were sent absentee ballot request forms, so it made it easy for them to send those in and vote from home. It just remains to be seen how many people are going to wait till the last minute, go ahead and vote at the polls on Election Day.
What are the locations for the seven polling places?
In, yeah, in Waterloo, it's going to be two locations, East High and West High. Cedar Falls, I'm sorry, I'm trying to remember where it is in Cedar Falls. We'll have that information available, but then there will also be polling locations in Hudson, Evansdale, La Porte, and Dunkerton.
So probably.
Only one in Cedar Falls?
Just one in Cedar Falls, yes.
Well, if there's anything we can do to continue to get that word out there for the absentees, it seems like everybody uses social media, but there's also a lot of the elderly that don't use social media.
That's true, but we not only are getting out press releases that go to more traditional forms of information dissemination, but like I said, everybody who is an active registered voter in the state received one of those forms.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Grant. All right. Looks like.
Mike Henderson, Director of County Conservation. Just very quickly, we all know that the governor's taking steps and loosening some of the restrictions, and at some point, she will include campgrounds, state campgrounds and facilities. And I just wanted to let you know, we are working on a plan for our facilities. The Iowa County Conservation System across the state is monitoring that very closely. We're communicating, and so everyone is going to, when she makes that move, County Conservation across the state will move along with her, or with the state. And so we are working on phases and restrictions that may be laying out there and how we'll open these campgrounds up. One of the main things being to take a look at each campground and say, what is the safe capacity at this point? What can that be? For instance, in Big Woods with 54 full hookup sites, and 25 safely camp there and keep social distancing in order. So we're looking at each one of those, and that's what's being done across the state, throughout the county systems. So without getting into all the restrictions and all that kind of stuff, just wanted you to know, we are working on a plan, so when she makes that move, we will be ready to go ahead and do that also in a safe manner. So just wanted to lay that out to you guys, and we'll continue to work on a plan and be ready, so. Any questions at all for me?
Yeah, Mike, obviously, if, when that happens, your big moneymaker really is your Rotary Reserve out there, Hickory Hills, the rentals, and obviously, we're probably going to maintain that social distancing, so it's highly unlikely you're going to be getting much bookings there if you've got to keep the crowd. You know what I'm saying?
Exactly.
I think you're going to take a hit on those facilities probably, probably the rest of the year, in my opinion, but.
Yeah, we're taking a good hit on them right now.
Yeah, I know you are. I know you are. That's why I keep preaching all the time, that revenues are going to be down, and we all know it, so.
Yep, yep, and we're very, very aware of that, and we are, we will tighten things up as best we can.
Yep.
Mike, have you been, have you received a lot of questions or calls from the public, I guess, wondering about campgrounds opening up?
At this point, no. Once again, most of the phone calls and emails we're getting have to do with reservations that we've already taken. A very, very few people are asking about reservations into the future. That has just almost stopped, but really, it's reservations. Not a lot of people have cared about the camping and that kind of stuff.
Hey, Mike, I guess this goes for, we're all department heads, but if you could come up with like best estimates and, you know, maybe go on the, sorry, what lost revenues might be, both for our own planning, but also there is debate in Washington DC about relief packages that will go to local government. It'd be great to have figures that we can take to our federal representatives.
Yeah, and we are, Chris, we're tracking every dollar that we're refunding. We're tracking every one of those, and so we'll have, we have those numbers current up to date right now, and we'll continue to do that. So as, if things get extended at like, or, you know, if they don't lift the 10-person restriction, you know, through the month of June or something like that, then there go all of the June rentals in the Rotary. Right now, everyone is holding on. They just want to wait because they have nowhere to go anyway. So it's either they hold on and they have something if they can, or they take their refund at that point. So, but we are tracking those, and that's camping reservations, cabin reservations, Rotary and Lakeview Lodge reservations, everything we take money for, we are keeping track of that. So we'll have those numbers for you.
Good, good point, Chris. I was going to say, I know James was working last week or gave us some of that information, you know, generalizing our revenue streams and what that meant, but I, I think we'd like to see probably a little more specific department-wise revenues and expenses, as, I mean, knowing it's just an estimate, but seeing what that might look like on, yeah, when you put pen to paper, I guess, and really know what those are, or what we're thinking or projecting.
Well, we want all our, we want all our departments to track that.
Yes, that's why I was looking at James, yes. I knew, like I said, he was working on that, but I just thought to really get more specific with everybody, so we'd have.
But we need the department heads to work with James so they can come up with these numbers and guesstimate.
Yeah, that's what I just said.
I was putting a pencil and paper the other day, and there's areas that you don't think about, like the gambling tax, the county receives about $400,000. Don't think that ain't going to be less.
Yeah, I mentioned that last week, I think, and our grants and different things.
Commercial tax, you know, the state's going to be looking for money. They're already saying they're millions behind, so that commercial tax could go. We could get hit quite a few ways, so I think it's good, what Chris said, for conservation, for all departments to keep tracking their revenue losses from here on out. And I wouldn't hold my breath waiting for Washington to reimburse us, but what I'd be waiting for is what the state's going to do and how it's going to affect us, you know, darn well, we're going to be paying for one or the other at this level. So I think all the departments need to start tracking their losses and keep that buckly and.
Well, it sounds like they have been doing that, but yeah, you're right. We need as good a figures as we can get.
Because obviously, there's going to be less money, and with the gambling, the commercial, and like Sandy on passports, you know there not going to be any passports issued. She's going to use revenue there. The Treasurer's Office, I'm not concerned with because people are going to pay their taxes, and we're in pretty good shape there, and the deadline, I think, was stretched out to the middle of May, so I think that one will be all right. The other ones, we're going to be in trouble, I think.
Well, I think going forward, Tom, too, we have to look, there'd be some businesses, unfortunately, that may not even survive this, so that next year's taxes will be impacted, but more importantly, those businesses will struggle or fail, and that's unfortunate.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch base real quick. I have been in, or I've been in communication with the departments, making sure that we are tracking that. One point that I was going to make as well is, for the last quarter of this fiscal year, I'm doing monthly budget reports for the Board, and so that is what I'm incorporating in this month's budget report and with plans and things going forward. So, yeah, no, we've been in, we've been in communication, and we'll get that out to you as soon as possible, because there are a lot of different areas that might not be, might not be a lot on one person's budget, but when you start adding things up, it's going to add up. So we'll, we'll monitor that, and I'll get that report out to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great. And I would just add, details are helpful in this, especially if we can, as we communicate with the state and federal government, they like a narrative, especially so we can, they can tell as they're fighting for the stuff. So specific examples, overall loss from departments, but example of what you're exactly losing. All right. Move on. Any other department heads or elected officials just give an update today? Yes, Orlando? I think, I think you're muted, still maybe on your own computer.
I think it's Defisa.
Yeah, I can go.
Yes, just go ahead, Defisa, and we'll let Orlando figure this audio there.
Good morning, good morning, Board. Right now, in terms of COVID-19, we're starting to see a steady decline, but it's immediate. They're also just, you know, that it's not, we're still waiting to make sure that it's accurate. It might also be because there's such a backlog in regards to testing results. I know the state hygienic lab is receiving a huge amount of testing that they need to run, but we've seen, our numbers have kind of reduced for the past two days, but again, that's just, it could be because of the backlog. So that's where we're at. We, we are planning meetings with long-term care facilities, with businesses, just to prepare them in case things start to open up for them, what those protocols look like, answer all their questions. We're working with Rose Cedar Valley, and Carrie Garrett is, she's the president who's helping us to be able to get all the businesses together, so that's exciting for us, at least to just touch base with them and see what are some of their needs and how we can help them, whether on a one-on-one basis or as a collective group. So on Wednesday, we'll be discussing those strategies with Carrie Garrett. Long-term care facilities, again, these are now the critical areas of focus, as you are aware, we have two outbreaks here that are, that have been identified, so we're going to continue to monitor, work with them closely, and assist them with everything that they need. I had a meeting with Tyson Corporation, myself, Sheriff Thompson, and Mayor Harv. I believe it was on Monday. The meeting went well, and the discussion, honey, was it Monday or, maybe it was last week? I'm so sorry, my days are blurred, but it went very well. They showed us some of the measures that they've set in place in terms of assisting with social distancing, and they will be working with two medical entities to help them monitor some of the cases and surveillance if there's a need that arises within the plant. We will be having a meeting with them also at 11:00 to discuss what are the steps in terms of what is needed to reopen. Other than that, business as usual here at the Health Department. We're moving staff, and so that work has started. We did update our blackhawkcovid19.com website, so if you go on that website and you click county data, it gives you a more robust data of where we're at as a county, and it shows you the curve, so you can see where we're still seeking. We haven't plateaued yet, so we're hoping that that will start happening in the next week or so. The message that I'm continuing to communicate is really staying at home and social distancing for the residents at the moment. So that's where we're at. Any questions for me?
And Defisa, I understand that the testing at Tyson's finished now?
Yes, so the testing, uh, mm-hmm, go ahead.
Do we know how many positive tests came out of that facility?
So the testing at Tyson has finished. In terms of how many exactly, one of the things, I think it's best that Tyson releases those numbers. The protocol at the Health Department that we've been using, we've been telling, you know, for example, when there's a long-term outbreak at a facility, we ask them if they want to disclose the facility's name, and then we release that. So in terms of Tyson, it would still be the same protocol. What we have noticed and what we've been communicating is the spike of our cases starting since we've identified the outbreak, starting April 9th. And so again, I will talk to Tyson and see if they want to release those exact numbers since they are the ones that did the testing and went through their occupational health.
And I think the government officials in this county certainly have the right to know how many positive tests come out of there, especially when it doesn't fall under HIPAA, so I think that's a number I'd like to hear.
Okay. So I will communicate that with them at 11:00, and I'll talk to the state as well, Tom, and then let you know what they, they let, they tell me in terms of that release.
Thank you.
All right. Any other department heads today, or elected officials?
Oh, good morning, Board. This is Orlando Lovelace, Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs Director. And just a couple of things. I just wanted to thank Deborah in HR. We're able to finalize our open position for our office specialists, and then also finalizing the open position for the commission. Those numbers, names are forthcoming. A couple of other things that I wanted to share with you was, we did get the VA's expenditure report, it's called the GDX report. I'm sure you've seen it before. We are still the fourth-largest veteran population in the state. We have dwindled down, our veteran population in Blackhawk County is dwindling down. When you look at FY '17... We have dwindled down our veteran population in Blackhawk County. It's dwindling down. When you look at FY '17, we had 84 hundred veterans. In '18, we had 81. And then as of FY '19, we're down to 7961. These are estimate numbers. Positive thing from that, from the GDX report that's looking, is we're bringing in monthly about $28,000 in compensation and pension. So that's revenue that these veterans are, that have applied for pension and compensation that's coming into Blackhawk County. And so I think that's a positive thing. It grew about $4,000 from the previous two years. So that's additional revenue that's coming into our county. And the goal of ours here is to continue to keep that pace right around that $28,000 as a goal, even though we've had a month or two of shortcomings with COVID-19. But we, we're still, that's a goal to stretch forth. A couple of other things is again, our, our numbers have been low in that standpoint with the effects of COVID-19. COVID-19 has affected us when it comes to donations, where it comes to food pantry donations, and that's understandable. But looking to go into the summer, we're hoping that we can pick back up. I guess the scariest part that I have is how do we restart something that we've shut down and then get it back started? And then lastly, we're looking at, we totally moved out of that hallway for Defisa and the Health Department. And then we're pressing, I've been talking with Rory, to see if we can get started sometime deep into May is to move into that community center and be up and running in that community center by June and then maybe have an open house as things wash out with COVID-19, maybe July or August. But we would wait and find out about social distancing, things of that nature. But at least getting us established in that space by June 1st is a goal of mine. Any questions?
Thank you. Any other department heads or elected officials today? All right, we will move on to the minutes approved from the April 28th meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, minutes are approved. Next is the consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
The move is seconded. Anything, agenda anyone wishes to discuss?
I was just gonna ask Grant, since I think he was the one responsible for the advertisement for the finder of lost property, if he wanted to comment on that at all.
The city of Cedar Falls, Cedar Falls Police Department gives us an annual report of information, of materials, of goods, things that were found that were turned in by the public. And the way we've been handling that the last few years is to act as though it was things found by the Cedar Falls Police Department and following the procedure under the law for the finder of lost items to become the owner. You have to advertise it for a year. You have to have three publications in the newspaper. And Cedar Falls Police have been following that procedure. And once they do that advertising the paper, you're supposed to contact, they're supposed to contact the county auditor, who then is supposed to get it spread across the minutes. And then that starts the clock ticking for one year, after which whoever turns that in is the owner of the property.
Thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion or questions? Roll call, please, Mr. Peter.
Little?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Next is under contracts and agreements. This is a resolution that the agreement between Blackhawk County and Tyler Technologies for New World Software Support for a one-year term starting July 1st, 2020, which will automatically renew unless terminated by I've already be approved as recommended by Peter, Information Technology Director.
So this is our finance and payroll and HR application. In the past, it's been a three-year contract. This is a change that Tyler requested. Pete has looked at the agreement and I propose that you, well, renew the agreement.
Thank you.
I think you mentioned too, also, Kim, there was a 90-day-out clause. I don't know it.
Right, so as part of that is that we would need to let them know 90 days before the next year began. So as much effort as it would to replace the application, we would know plenty of time if we wanted to sever the contract, so.
And you also mentioned about renewing automatically?
Yes, it'll renew every year.
Every year or just, okay, so not just unlimited to three years or anything?
Right. It'll continue to renew unless we terminate.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to accept that agreement.
I'll second it.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion or questions? Roll call, please, Mr. Peter.
Treoka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. The resolution is approved. Under other business, this is a motion that the personnel requisition for two assistant county attorneys full-time starting July 1st, 2020 and July 1st, 2020 in the county attorney's office.
Oh.
Recommended by Brian Williams, county attorney.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion or questions?
Chris, there's one correction.
Yes.
Um, one of them would be full-time, one of them would be part-time. I didn't clarify that in my email.
All right, the folks that made the resolution have accepted that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion or questions?
And Brian, the reason for the vacancies again, or the reason for these hirings, just so the public knows?
One of them is retiring, having been employed here since 1976. And has dedicated a great, I don't know the full story, but I think he intended on being here a couple, two or three years back in 1976. And we fast forward to 2010, I think he's ready to, I think he's ready to retire. Pete, does that sound there? Yep.
Muted as he is.
We're gonna miss him and I, I'm very grateful for him giving me till July for that vacancy. And then the other one's husband took another position.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Pete, you were muted, but just remarkable service to this community. I really appreciate it.
You're unmuted now if you want to say something.
I guess you're unmuted now if you want to say something, Kim says.
No, I'm a pretty fortunate guy, so it's, it's been a good trip for me.
We've been very fortunate to have you, too.
I think we all wish you a long and healthy appearance.
Yes. Thank you very much.
We'll say it again in July, but yeah, appreciate it.
Hopefully we'll be together to celebrate. All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye.
All is opposed? The motion is approved. Next is a motion to direct the county auditor to average as a public hearing held at 7:00 a.m. on Tuesday, May 16, 2020, Boardroom 201 of Blackhawk County Courthouse, B6 East 50, Waterloo, Iowa, on the preparation of the application of excess bond proceeds and protecting for publication of notice.
Oh, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
James is, I think, at the podium.
Yep, I'm up here. So.
All we're doing is, all we're doing is setting the date of a public hearing. Discussion comes when you have the public hearing.
Yes, but we, so I put it on here for action. We don't have to do this if, if we decide to use CIP fund reserves. So we can really use those funds and avoid going through the publication, doing the whole public hearing process if that's what we decide to do. So with that being said.
What's your recommendation?
Yeah.
My recommendation would be use CIP funds. And why I'm, why I'm saying that is we have a pretty healthy CIP fund reserve. That's what it was there for. I know, I know that we had talked about a week ago in Rory's boiler project, kind of spilled over by roughly about $58,000. So having the CIP fund for these types of projects, I think, is going to be extremely helpful. If we use, again, if we use the CIP fund reserves for, there's roughly about $70,000 that we need to allocate towards that, then we can do that without holding a public hearing, without publishing and going that route. So again, that would be my recommendation, but again, that's, that's, I mean, whatever the board is wanting to do, I'm happy to do it, so.
So, but accepting your recommendation, then we wouldn't need the hearing today to go forward with that, what you're saying.
Yeah, so then, yeah, so then at that point, then we would just move forward without the hearing and we can just vote this down and we don't even have to worry about it. So that's why, that's why it's on there and that's why I kinda wanted to have that quick conversation, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Board, that, that sounds all right to me. What is the, the opinion of the board?
Sounds good to me.
I'm fine with the recommendation.
I am too.
It all sounds good.
I just wanted to, yeah.
Having the hearing or doing the CIP?
Uh, just doing the CIP fund.
The CIP was his recommendation.
Your other side of it?
So, sorry, another point too is these bond proceeds are back from 2015. Realistically, these, and I've had a conversation with Rory as well, they're, they're really gonna be closed and taken care of at the end of this fiscal year. We really shouldn't be holding these bonds proceeds open as, as long as we have been, but that'll get taken care of at the end of this year. I would much rather, just rather, or do that than start reallocating funds and go that route. So it's really best practice just to kind of move on from these bond proceeds and, and use, use CIP fund reserves, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so what is the desire of everybody on the board?
Oh, we do have a motion on the floor currently. So if we're gonna use the CIP funds, we can have a vote and turn it down if that's, if the board chooses or they can vote for the hearing and we go the other way.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion or questions where we act on the motion?
And again, if we use the CIP, we don't need the public hearing, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, so everybody understand, if you, if you're voting yes for this motion, that's going forward with the hearing. If you vote no, then the funds will just go onto the CIP fund. All right, all those, yeah, we can do a roll call, make it clear.
Okay.
A roll, please, Mr. Peter.
White?
No.
Treoka?
No.
Layland?
No.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
No. All right, the motion is denied. Moving on to, this is a motion to authorize and direct the finance director to accept the hearing to be held at 9:00 a.m. on May 26, 2020, Boardroom 201 of Blackhawk County Courthouse, Waterloo, Iowa, for fiscal year 20 budget amendment.
I'm here for any questions as far as the budget amendment goes. Now that we turned that down, I will add the, the $70,000 increase in CIP funds to pay for the VA renovation.
Motion to approve.
That'd be the only increase, so.
Can you review or would you be willing to review or do you have that information?
Yeah, sure, I can do that now. I can otherwise, I can go with Kim and put up a slideshow when we, when we do the public hearing as well.
So what you did send us previously, though, you don't see any change in that, at least at this point in time, except for the $70,000?
Yeah, aside from the $70,000 that I had increased. And then I had gotten a, an email from Karen in elections as well. We might need to shift some of the salary from auditors to elections just because they're helping out in the elections department, but.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
I would like to take just a minute, since we're at the topic where I guess some of those things in the amendment were the solar project. And, and this is just, I wanted the board's input on this. I reached out to Rory last week and apologized to him that I said for the last two weeks I've been thinking about this project when we did the RFPs and kind of sent those out. And I know the solar project is something that we have all unanimously supported. We all think it's a great project for the community for a variety of reasons. And I am not in any way asking us to, to remove that project from something that we're doing. I was just wondering with the COVID situation and the way we're looking at all of our projects in every department and seeing how the impact of revenue and expenses will impact us going forward. I wondered, as we're asking our department heads to look at their projects and maybe delay or postpone or whatever, if we shouldn't also look at the solar project. Like I say, not canceling the project at all, but maybe just delaying it. And that was just a thought and I wanted to hear the board's thoughts on that. And like I say, it was just me with some concerns over the last couple of weeks that we maybe would want to just pull back on that a little bit and before it went too far public. I know Rory mentioned at that time, I think the pre-bid meeting is set for today, this afternoon. And I said I was still not anticipating anything changing on that and having that. But knowing how the board felt about the project and if we maybe should hold off a little bit on it, at least being able to relay that information to them as well. But this could be a position that only I'm in, so I wanted to hear from the other board members.
This is Chris. I support still moving forward at this point. I know we, we do have recovers. And obviously we ought to be following revenue in, in all of our different departments. I don't think we're in a position where we're still not able to move forward on this.
Can we have this as a separate action item next week? Obviously this, all this agenda item we're on right now is setting a public hearing date. The discussion should be coming during the public hearing and not today. Do we have this on the agenda for next week, solar by itself?
Well, I suppose we could. I didn't know if there was a reason to put it on the agenda. I was really just kind of asking the question from the board, not for action unless the board would prefer it that way, obviously.
But it's hard to make a decision, Linda, because we don't have a place to make that decision. I see what you're saying and you gave your opinion on you'd like to delay it. I'm not so sure I wouldn't agree with that. But I, I don't know if we could just arbitrarily say that right now. I guess I don't know what you're looking for.
Well, since Rory has the meeting and the pre-bid meeting set up, I said it really wasn't looking for a direction, but something he could share with them if he thought there was any possibility that we would maybe be delaying this. I guess is giving him that information because, you know, there's gonna be a lot of time from our staff, but a lot of time from these vendors, which isn't, to me, isn't fair to anyone to go ahead with the project. And then when we get ready to fund it, say, oh gee, you know, I wish we'd have got back to you sooner or I wish we'd have talked about this sooner and delayed this or for whatever reason. And my only reason for delaying, Chris, was I know our reserves are very strong, but it's looking at, not knowing what maybe will be the community needs, you know, from a social services standpoint or from where we go from here with COVID-19, I guess, and what that means for us, but what it means for helping others possibly, but just looking at those needs. And like I said, I wanted, just can't reiterate enough, I don't mean putting the project off or pulling that off. It was just delaying.
You know, as, as indicated, it was said that we do have healthy reserves, but you know what scares me the most is the unknown. And the unknown is what's gonna happen in the future. We may not be back to normal this year. And so I, I think regardless where our reserves are at, we need to walk cautiously because you can see what Waterloo is doing already. They're behind the lean projects and so forth, so.
Well, could we, I know it's not what was anticipated by anybody, but just thoughts on it, we could certainly put it on for board action. I'm not meaning that we couldn't do that, but I just thought to give some direction to Rory. If there's a consensus, nah, maybe I don't want the consensus, just the thoughts on, you know, on going forward.
I would like to pump the brakes just a little slow. I mean, I'm not saying we're not gonna do the project. We know that.
Yeah, and we could actually decide, you know, if things start going well, to change it.
See if all this is gone.
Well, we could change it at any time, too. If we pump the brakes for a short time, we could come back and then say next, this fall, hey, let's do this, you know, but that's all.
Just be, just because we're getting the pre-bids doesn't mean we're gonna accept any of them, so I'd rather see us move forward right now. Keep going.
Yes.
That was, that was only my fear, is that you have all the people do the work and then say, sorry, we don't want to fund it now.
That's happening a lot, for a lot of things.
I know, but it's just because it's this large, huge project.
To give you a bid.
Yeah, well, I'm fine with it.
Sometimes they don't get it.
True.
Of course, it's been, it's been a year since we talked about this. Of course, it's been, it's been a year since we talked about this. There'll probably be another year before we even get the bids and start doing something.
Well, we can wait. Like I said, I mean, we, I don't mean wait. I mean, we can go forward. I meant, we can wait at any time. We can also pull the project off. It was just, just a thought. I'm sorry.
Yeah. I think there's, there's been a lot of work done to get to this point. And there's, there's a, a lot of people bidding on this. That's a lot of work to get companies interested. So I, I, let's see where the bids come back at and, and there. Of course, we, we do always have that option to turn it down. I hope that we don't, but we, we still have options even if we're still moving forward with, with the bid hearing and everything today.
Okay. Well, that's really all I wanted. It was just kind of the reservations I've been having and kind of weighing on me as we look at all the projects we talk about, that this was a big one that we were moving forward with.
You're not too far off, Dave, Linda. You're.
Thank you. Now we can move on.
All right. Let's see. I, I believe we do have a, a motion on this.
I'm sorry. Who, who moved it?
The date. All right. Any other discussion or questions?
Grant's asking, who made the motion?
I did, I did.
I'll move.
Never mind. Okay. Who seconded that?
I'll, I'll make it White, Little.
Thanks.
Little, White.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. The motion is approved. Next is discussion, possible board action, discuss counting preparedness for COVID-19. I know that we're all gonna be seeing how the, the coming weeks unfold. I don't feel in a position to change anything today. One thing I'd just put out there is just the feasibility of within the courthouse does open backups to the public. This would apply to other facilities as well. Possibly making the requirement that people wear a mask when they command both the, both public and, and employees.
And get a, a temperature check every morning when they come in.
Yes.
Yes.
I, I agree with that as well, Supervisor White.
Following, following up on that point, yesterday at Pinecrest, people are coming into Pinecrest, got a call from several people concerned that DHS is, uh, doing interviews and people are coming in without masks for the interviews. We're putting our own people in danger. We're putting the guard in danger. That is wrong.
Right.
They, they need to start testing out there and following up and, you know, keeping people out there without masks on.
Did you?
We had a hundred and fifty-one people come in here yesterday. I think they said about, less than ten percent had masks on that come into the courthouse.
Are employees coming in without masks on?
Well, you, most of them are coming in to the courthouse with their mask on. Unless you're sitting in your office.
I, I will be delivering another thirty-five or so masks. I'll drop off in the board office this evening for employees.
Great. Thank you.
Are we still screening people as they're coming into the courthouse with the questionnaire?
We've never done that.
Okay.
For the state services, you mean? Were you talking about the state services, Dan?
Yeah, for the state services, yeah.
The emergency services?
Oh, I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
No, they're not wearing masks over there either. The people they're bringing in for court are not wearing masks. Lawyers going into aren't wearing masks.
Yes, I think masks should be worn when people are entering county facilities.
I put that out last week.
The only problem is if they don't have a mask at their avail, availability, I think we need to have an alternative option available.
I, you see, if you look at what Menards is doing, you could, you do have the option of buying one from them. They're on the spot.
Yeah, I had six million of them last night.
So it's, so if we, maybe we could make the requirement, publicize this heavily, this will be the requirement. Also, when, when it opens up to the general public, it maybe have a stockpile of, of masks. I was just looking, even on, on Amazon, of course, there's better places to source them. Get, get them down to about these things each. So if we, card dollar, require that you had exact change, so we're not handling change and all that kind of nonsense. That would, I think, encourage most people to, to figure out a mask. And I think most people are capable of figuring out something at this point.
I think when we first start doing that process, though, we'll have to have quite a few on hand to give to individuals. I mean, hopefully they'll all start coming to the courthouse with their own masks, but we might want to have a supply on hand.
Do we have it posted now that you have to have a mask in the courthouse?
Do, do we have that? No, no.
Is it required right now?
Is it posted outside that you have to have a mask on to come in the courthouse?
No.
I heard you, Tom. I'm just questioning, is it required to have one right now?
No, we, we haven't posted it.
I'm just saying, is it posted? I mean, we're talking about making people do it. Do we have it posted?
Rory says no.
And is it required?
I thought the governor.
We'd have to do it.
We have, I don't believe we have made that a requirement. We talked about it a couple of weeks ago. And I believe others were concerned that we didn't have, we weren't providing, though we shouldn't make the requirement. But we're getting further into this, that most people are figuring out how to have access to a mask.
Yeah.
Especially when the courthouse.
When Menards has a list that is either a mask, shield, covering, even a scarf, something.
Right, yeah. A bandana. You know, you cut some holes in a socket, put it over years and, you know.
Anything'll work, yeah. Quote of the week. Especially when we open it back up, though. We've got to do that, so.
Yeah. I, I would, I mean, I would like, I would entertain a motion to implement the requirement now and when it, and in effect when the, when we open up to the public. And then.
I thought I already made a motion. I, I just said that. I think we should repair that and temperature checks.
We have to.
If they don't have a mask, they can't come in?
Yeah. And, and I think.
It's for the safety of the employees.
Sorry, go ahead Supervisor White.
It's for the safety of the employees, Tom.
I'm, I'm just asking.
Oh, okay.
It's their property. They pay the bills. If they don't have the mask, they can't come in.
Yeah. And I think, um, how do people?
Anybody, man.
Deal about, if, if we were to provide masks, people could buy cheaply when they arrive to the courthouse if they didn't.
I, I honestly think they should wear masks. I would. I think they should. But again, Chris, are you gonna have a taxpayer charged to put a mask on to come in their own courthouse?
Yeah. I, I'd be all right not charging them also. My, my, Chris, people provide their own, so we're not going through a ton.
No, the posting be a covering, a mouth, a covering of the mouth, whatever that is, you know, it can be.
Sweaters.
Some people won't wear a mask, but they'd wear that bandana, you know?
Yep.
Their mouth or a scarf. I think it should too. I think we gotta post it. I think we're gonna have some problems, but I guess we'll deal with that as time goes on.
Right.
So are we having different rules? Just to be clear, I guess, not that everybody wouldn't wear a mask in the courthouse. I think most people are doing that now. However, when they're in their own offices or when they're, you know, just safe distancing from people, sometimes that's not the case. But we're looking at specifically for the public when they're visiting us in, anywhere in the courthouse, they would wear one. But staff wear it with the social distancing requirements or, I mean, I'm just, just wanted clarification.
How do we know if the county employees in Pinecrest are wearing a mask?
You mean when they enter the building?
Yeah.
I believe so. I think that's the only reason they would have called.
I guess.
What else? They're concerned for their own health.
Linda, Linda. I think, Linda, to answer your question, I guess I would think, mostly it's, it's just required if you're in the presence of others. Because especially, you know, the whole six feet and ten feet thing, you know, they're saying aerosol, with the aerosol, it can, you know, spread thirty feet even. And so, in their own office with the door shut, obviously, you don't need to wear it. But I think otherwise, if you're in the presence of others, you should have it on.
Yeah. And I see staff, really, that's kind of the way most staff is doing. I haven't seen anybody that doesn't, in the few, few I see, but yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Yes.
This is Grant Veder. Could I ask that maybe this be put on the agenda next week when there is, there can be a motion that covers the nuances so we don't get confused about what we're talking about today? So, you know, if, so that it will address employees, it will address public, it'll address when and where masks should be worn. Craig's original motion included taking temperature. So there are a lot of aspects to this that might be hard for us to get put down accurately in a vote and put in the minutes by somebody who's writing the minutes, who's maybe not following everything as well as you would like.
We'll approve it later. Thank you.
I, I understand your point, Mr. Veder. My only reservation would be maybe we would just call a specific meeting for later this week. So sooner we get this out there to the public and to our employees, like the public more time to prepare that we reach the point that we open up. I just, I'd just rather give people more notice and more time to be prepared what their expect, expectations will be for the courthouse. I definitely understand your point of wanting to have most kind of written out and all the detailed nuances.
Well, I, I think probably I'd support Grant's recommendation to wait, just because it gives others an opportunity as well to speak to this or things that, that we maybe haven't considered or think about. I, I know, Chris, what you're thinking about is giving as much notice to people as possible, but I don't think we'll be opening up next week and I'm not sure the following, but that was just my thought.
I think we should just put it on the agenda for next week, so department heads can prepare, give it some thought and bring the nuances forward. Yeah. I just, my concern, this COVID agenda item is not a catch-all. When we're gonna make a decision, we need to have a specific language on the agenda so the public knows when they see that. Because right now we're passing something that wasn't even on the agenda. So I think, I think when we hold these votes, they should be on the agenda in their own language.
Okay.
I think we need to add some stuff downstairs then to protect the, uh, the guards then because they're dealing with the public. They don't have masks on. Day before, or last Thursday or Friday, three people come in knowingly from Tyson. They were Tyson employees, came in the courthouse and the guards shuffled them out.
Because.
So there needs to be something done to protect. There's no protection down there for the guards. All of our, most of the departments already got protections up. There's nothing for the guard.
Why don't they have masks?
They do have masks.
Oh, you mean, what?
There are not, there's no, there's not six feet there, Linda.
Oh, you mean just the social distancing?
Yeah.
We can do that, though. I mean, as far as controlling the people.
We put a piece of tape down there in the, uh, out front, six feet back, and people come right up and they, they disregard it. It was tell them to get back and they just sat there and stared at the guard. What's the guard supposed to do?
I was gonna ask Rory for an update on those floor spacing stickers and, and the plexiglass. Rory, have you got, even on the plexiglass, I guess I'm very curious to know when we'll have that in case we were to.
It's being put up.
Well, I mean, when it'll be finished and open for the public, so we wouldn't have our issues.
Good morning. Rory Givens, Maintenance Superintendent. Our goal, our goal on the plexiglass is to have all of that installed anywhere where there's interaction with the public before we do open up the facility. We currently have about ten sheets left here for the courthouse and we have another ten sheets on the way for Pinecrest. With regards to masks, we did have one box of twenty that we gave to the guards. So they do have, I don't know where they're at as far as the inventory on that box, but that was the only box that we had. I believe they have grabbed masks that Chris had brought in also here a few weeks back. With regards to the stickers, labeling, we'll be working with a printing company here downtown Waterloo. I have reached out to Lyndon Elges. We're gonna see if we can't piggyback on with the state to get a better rate on these stickers. We did talk about postings on the courtroom doors. Felt like that was also a good idea. I know there was some concern about having too many postings up, but I think that the postings that she shared with me and that Chris had shared with me are, uh, different enough that it's going to get the, the people's attentions. It's, it's a color that is gonna stick out rather than just a typed, you know, sheet of paper on the, on the door. So those are the things that we are currently working on for the opening of the courthouse.
Approximately how long do you think for the plexiglass to be installed with that?
We're, we're, again, our goal, anticipating that next Tuesday, there'll be a discussion again on whether or not we open the board. So our, our goal is to have the plexiglass up within the next two weeks.
Thank you.
And Rory, I just had one other question for you. There's a, there's been a lot of discussion about, and I've heard about building facilities and things that can be done. And one thing that's talked about a lot is increasing the capacity of bringing more fresh air into ventilation systems. And sometimes that comes at the cost of some of the efficiency. But I think, I know that we have very few windows, if any, in the courthouse that are really open. But that's, that's just something I wanted to put on your radar to, to think about. It's possibly, uh, increasing the amount of, of fresh air intake in our facilities.
Yeah, exactly. Here at the courthouse, yesterday we were at a hundred percent fresh air. We have not turned our chillers on here at the courthouse yet. And so we've been utilizing our dampeners. We have two air handlers here at the courthouse, and both of those air handlers, we're bringing in a hundred percent of fresh air to try to keep that circulating through the building. Pinecrest, we have been utilizing the chiller over there. We, we do have a limited amount of fresh air coming into that building, but given the nature of that building, we don't quite have the capability of bringing in as much fresh air as we do in our other buildings. But we're doing what we can to maintain the temperature also.
When, when the chillers do come on at, at the courthouse, what fresh air possibilities at that point?
We still, we still will bring in fresh air. It's a, it's kind of a balancing act to, to keep the temperatures where we need them within the building. And we balance that with, uh, opening and closing of the dampeners. And so when it gets real humid out, a lot of times, that's when the, the dampeners will need to be shut down. Otherwise, it, it does get very humid in this building. And we do have to be somewhat careful, especially with our acoustical ceiling tile. And, and so we kind of manage that humidity by controlling those outside dampeners. But we will make it our goal to try to bring in as much, uh, fresh air as we possibly can without, without damaging anything within the building.
All right. And if there's maybe other mitigation strategies, we can look into reducing moisture and still allowing for fresh air coming in. It's, it's just something to look into both in the short term and, and in our, our building designs.
Yeah. We have a few dehumidifiers located, especially in the lower level of the, of the building, but that's really about our only defense against humidity at this point.
Is that something, Rory, we could do in the evenings? Like say, bring in the air from, and kind of shut it down so that brings in more air in the evenings and?
And we do. Our, our system does shut off. I believe it's five thirty. And then our dampeners will open up and essentially we're not cooling the building down at night.
Okay. I meant, that kind of circulates some of the outside stuff.
That will help, kind of recirculate the building. Yep.
Thanks.
I believe Supervisor White, I know you had, had a motion for, do you wanna, do you wanna work with me to draft the language that we want to put on the agenda for everybody?
You're the boss. Go for it.
Okay. All right. So we will have, we will place, just to folks that they've got input, share it with us, so we've got something in, in writing that we can vote on.
Yep.
In regards of masks.
Sounds good.
If you feel there's separate items, Chris, make sure you, rather make one item complicated, put on a couple of different items that we can vote on.
Absolutely. Very good. Absolutely, very good.
And that gives people a chance to comment too next week, so that's great.
That will be on the agenda, public can see it.
All right. And as I said, I'll be putting about 35 or so more masks in the board office this evening for, for employees to use. And if department heads, just kind of indicate if they still have a shortage of, or people are reporting right now and kind of handle on how many. Maybe, maybe just communicate to your employees that when they do come back, this is likely bringing the expectation.
I've got some extra Green Day Packer ones to.
I'll, I'll find some Bears ones then.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, this is Linda Nelsus. Just a couple, a couple of questions. Good morning. I heard, I believe, Mr. White say that there were two individuals from Tyson that entered the courthouse. I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about what actions were taken. Obviously, they probably did not have a positive test or anything like that. But I'm just wondering how far they got into the courthouse, just to have that knowledge. And then second, I'm wondering if the board has given any additional thought as to what does happen if we incur a positive test within the courthouse? What are the protocols as far as alerting staff and locking the place down and how do we bring people back and that sort of thing? I, I don't know if the boards had those discussions, but I'd be interested in hearing what, what you think might happen in those instances.
Well, it, it would be my belief if, if we did have a positive case identified within the courthouse that we should shut down and evacuate immediately and a deep cleansing should take place before it's reopened. And then I think that employees should be notified as, as soon as possible as well of that.
Okay. And is there any thought given as to, you know, timeframe in terms of bringing them back and, you know, how supervisors will be notified of the incident as well as the procedure to bring them back? Nothing that you need to even answer today, Chris. I mean, just, just some thoughts that we've been, we've been going through these exercises with other counties. And so I just wanted to touch on it with you folks as well, as well, to see if there was any consideration or, or planning put in place in that regard.
Chris.
What complicates it, like most courthouses, is that we have state employees involved. So it's not as easy as we've learned to just shut them down. So these are all great questions and things we need to consider. I guess the question, if there was a positive person, where did, who did that person expose? Where did it go to? One office? How to get there? So forth. You see what I'm saying?
I think that's all part of what the Health Department does as far as that investigation.
I do too, so. I, I don't know. I think the smart thing to do is we'd obviously contact the Health Department immediately.
Well, they'd contact us, I'm sure, immediately. And so then, yeah, the process would start for what we would want to do. So it does, good to have the question and discussion.
As part of that discussion, I'm just thinking about our situation in the election office where we're very busy with absentee ballots. And we have a responsibility to get ballots sent out immediately when we get requests. And so if any planning on this takes place, I hope that it will include the thoughts of how, if there is an evacuation or need to take time to sanitize an area that priority be given to areas where we need work to return as quickly as possible. If, if we were out for a week, that, that would be, you know, that'd be unacceptable. We, we need to have as quick a turnaround as possible to get staff back working for the election. And if you can just imagine how much more it's going to be this fall, and we don't know what the situation's going to be this fall, but we're doing, you know, 8,000 absentee ballots now. We'll be doing 30, 40,000 in the fall.
Well, if it were to be an incident in your department, that obviously would be something that would require a lot of cleaning and what, some type of an alternative. But I, hopefully, most of the staff, it would be regarding their own departments. There wouldn't be, there isn't a lot of interaction going on where it would be contaminating the whole courthouse, but we'll see.
Right, so I think those, those are thoughts that need to be discussed to make sure that we're, we're looking at how, how far you have to go in covering the whole building or if it's just one department or where that person would have been in contact with other people. So that it's, it's not looked at as the whole facility that we'd have to take into account individual departments.
This is Linda again, and I'll just throw out there, I know Lynn County has had two positive cases in their courthouse. And I believe they ended up shutting down the whole courthouse, evacuating everybody due to the fact that everybody comes through the same entrance and possible exposure to surfaces and that kind of thing there. So, you know, perhaps there's some lessons can be learned from them if somebody wanted to reach out to them to see what procedures they took in that regard. And I would also offer, the state would be happy to assist with the sanitizing. They have a vendor that they utilize in Lynn County to help with that. And so we would be happy to work together with you in that regard.
Linda, do you know, did they probably evacuate immediately just kind of for the protection of all the staff and to, before that investigation was there, but didn't stay down long term?
They, I think they were only out a day, just long enough for them to get in there and do that, that deep clean sanitizing.
Are they checking?
That's okay. We can check.
Coming to the courthouse?
I'm sorry. What was that?
Are they checking temperatures and everything? Do you know any of that?
I don't know if Lynn is. Some counties are, but I can't say for certain whether Lynn is now or not since they went back. I could ask.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to propose, I propose to Lynn County as maybe a subcommittee that'll work on, maybe representing the state.
Chris, you're cutting out, I don't know if you can hear me, but you're cutting out like every other word.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I was just going to propose, let's, let's have a, a small subcommittee that, that will bring a proposal to the board on, on the procedure. In, in County, I propose we'd have, if you, Linda Nagels, on that committee with us, your concerns, maybe Mr. Beeter, and maybe two supervisors.
Do we have a committee that maybe that would fall under already? I was.
On the safety committee.
Yeah, I was going to say maybe if that group wanted to.
All right, if they're, if they're here, they might be laid off.
Well, they could be zoomed in though, I mean, whatever.
Supervisor Chalk and I are both on the safety committee as well as.
Grant, you heard.
So, yeah.
You're breaking up again.
Yeah, you're breaking up again.
We can, we can call for a meeting of the safety committee too.
Sounds good.
Kind of proposal for the board. That would work. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have anything else we wish to discuss today? All right. Any reports or information from the board?
Chris, I've got one thing. I received, I received a letter, I'll have it on next week's agenda to accept place on file from an area pork producer. Basically, I'll forward that to all the supervisors. Basically just outlining his feelings on the impact that they're having now will have in the future. And so I'll forward that copy to all the board and I'll put it on the agenda for accepting place on file.
Very good.
I'd like, I want to report that I attended my first mutual, or virtual funeral last Saturday for my brother-in-law, Vietnam vet that died last week of a brain tumor from Agent Orange. And also just to report that a lot of things are changing on a, on a daily basis for the Honor Flight stuff and the field of.